Seven o'clock, the meeting will come to order. Andrew Lefranc, Cascade Supervisor. Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Tricia Pierce.
Here.
Trustee McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Castle.
Here.
Trustee Shipley. Trustee Nordhook.
Here.
Clerks Slater, here Supervisor Lefranc.
Here. Please rise if possible for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And I, United States of America. And to the republic which stands. Under God.
Indivisible. The Verity and Justice for all.
Before approving tonight's agenda. I'd like to suggest a couple revisions. First, at the last meeting, there was extensive discussion about the fire station project. And also, it was stated that it would be discussed at this meeting. It's not on this week's agenda. So I think it's appropriate that a member of the Public Safety Committee that met this week, Trustee Nordhook. Give us a brief update on the status of this project. He can do that under the presentation section. Also, item E in the consent agenda, realignment of the deputy positions. That is not a routine matter. That would be appropriate under the consent agenda. I think it more appropriately belongs in the items of new business. So that would be item zero three five, twenty twenty one. But it's important to note that although this is not a routine consent agenda item, it is an item that solely deals with process. And therefore, as it is a process item only, it's appropriate to have it in, within the public meeting. It is not a personnel. It does not address any direct personnel issues. To protect employees within the township, those types of issues are specifically to be privately dealt with by the board for the protection of those employees. So with that, is there any discussion or motions?
Shipley makes, Shipley makes a motion to approve the agenda consent agenda as amended by the supervisor.
Regular agenda.
Yes. The consent agenda, I'm sorry.
No, we're on, we're on approval of the regular agenda.
Oh, okay, regular agenda, okay. Thank you.
A second.
It's a motion by trustee Shipley to approve the consent agenda with the exception that item E, realignment of deputy positions will be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items of new business at the very end. So that would be zero three five, twenty twenty one. That was seconded by, was that trust, or excuse me, clerks later?
Right, but we're still at the point where we're making that change, but we're approving the whole agenda of this motion, correct?
Correct, with that caveat.
Okay.
Clerks Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Shipley.
Yay.
Tricia Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes Supervisor Lefranc.
Yes. Motion carried. Article four presentations. A quick reminder that we have the Community PFOS Forum meeting scheduled for April nineteenth at six o'clock. I'd like to thank staff who has and will continue to inform residents of this upcoming meeting. And I've received a lot of interest from different residents who are interested in serving on the resident advisory committee. And we will present appointments to that at the next meeting. Trustee Nordhook.
Yes, on the fire station issue that we were, we've been talking about now for quite a while. We actually did a road trip yesterday down to see the Portage Fire Station. The entire board was invited to join us. There was Chief Majors. The Lieutenant. Fireman there. Ben, John, Grace and myself did make the trip. It was very informational. They have a fabulous fire station put together down there, even has a training facility in it that they can repel. They can do manholes. They can jump out the side of the building and repel down that. It, very quality, solid masonry building. Four very large bays for the fire trucks, ninety feet in length. Eighteen foot ceilings, fourteen foot high doors, fourteen feet wide. It was a beautiful, beautiful facility, had everything in it you needed. That particular building came in at six point five million. Very impressed with it. It was sitting on about four and a half acres. Which is about an acre and a half more than we have for our fire station. But the key thing is. And we talked about it in the latest meeting, the safety meeting. They had an architect. Their architect recommended that they have a general contractor to do the work and get the bids, bid everything out. And then they also recommended that there be an owner's rep to oversee and keep an eye on quality of work and timeframe of the general contractor, which they said was a necessity for them. They caught many, many construction issues before it got to the finish point. So.
I missed the pledge of allegiance.
With all that said. I think I'd like to slow this process down a little bit. This is going to be the largest capital improvement we've done in our township, I just want to get it right. I want to make sure that this is done right. I would just put it out there for the next meeting, that this just get postponed until we can group together again and look at everything. Make sure we're going about this with a three oversight committee. Our fire station doesn't have the training facilities. That one dead, it was all in there for six and a half million. This thing even had copper flashing on the brick. It was done to the, done to the nines, it was a great fire station, fifty year lifespan. Epoxy floors out in the fire engine house. So, yeah, that's my report, I would love to slow this down. I think we can do this, take six months or so and look at it. Versus jumping right in, we gotta have it now. So that's, that's my opinion, that's the report.
Thank you. I would just add that at that fire station walkthrough in Portage, it wasn't so much, it was a great facility that the whole community was proud of and that it ended up being a really positive experience, the fire department felt like they were well served. The council, the city council, felt like they had done, the process was well vetted and there was a lot of oversight so that financially residents' dollars were stretched, maxed out. And it was just, it had the oversight that, that I didn't, didn't think we had the checks and balance system, especially with the owner's representative. It just, they couldn't have had enough great things to say about it and they came on, they finished the project on time despite a seven week shutdown from COVID. I remember the chief yesterday said that the, the owner's rep, between the owner's rep and the architecture firm, three pages, single spaced of either errors or omissions by the general contractor that, but for them having that checks and balance system would have been add-ons, financial add-ons. And instead, they stuck right to that six point million dollar mark, it was, it was the process and for the board who is ultimately making that decisions and we're stewards of the, of residents' tax money. I think it's a wonderful process to kind of look more closely at. I don't think it's a huge necessarily delay. If we piggyback off some of their great ideas, but I, I appreciate trustee Nordhook's comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think it's a good idea to have the Public Safety Advisory Committee put together their recommendations and then bring them to us because those, that all makes sense. So let's just get it documented and put it on the, on the agenda.
Thank you, Tom.
Great idea, thank you trustee McDonald. Okay, Article five, public comments. This is a reminder that there's public comments for anything not on the agenda that is scheduled for public hearing tonight. So that's anything on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. Deputy Manager Fast, do we have any comments?
Thank you Supervisor Lefranc. Please note, if you're joining us via telephone, you may raise your hand by pressing star nine and I will unmute your microphone when it is your turn. There are no raised hands at this time Supervisor Lefranc.
Thank you. Article six, approval of the consent agenda. Is there motions or discussions noting that Article E has been removed and placed on the new business as the last agenda item?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as discussed.
Support.
A motion by trustee Shipley to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E as previously discussed, seconded by trustee Castle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Article seven, financial actions, we have none tonight. Article eight, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? From anyone on the board? Hearing none, we will proceed. Article nine, new business. First, item thirty one, twenty twenty one. Resolution approving Brownfield redevelopment authority bylaws. Ms. Corhorn, is this yours, your area?
It is, thank you.
Thank you.
So at the February twenty fourth Township Board meeting, the board appointed five members to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board. And that group held their first meeting, their organizational meeting, last week on March seventeenth. And one of the agenda items at that meeting is they had to adopt their bylaws for their group. And the bylaws are basically the rules that govern the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board. So they did adopt those bylaws. The next step of that then was the Township Board needs to approve those bylaws. And I did include those in your packet tonight along with a resolution that must be passed stating the approval of the bylaws. So staff is recommending support of the resolution.
Ms. Corhorn, have those bylaws been reviewed by legal counsel?
Yes, they have. Before they went to the Brownfield Board meeting.
Before the last meeting with the Brownfield?
Before, yep, before the March seventeenth organizational meeting, they were reviewed by legal. Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Does this, does this give the the committee the authority to spend money without our approval?
It says in there, maybe just one second. It does look like the Township Board has to review items, so. Checkstraths. Have to be signed off by officers, determined by, determined by resolution of the board. So yes, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board and it looks like the township, majority vote of the Township Board as well.
I had that same concern because the language appeared to me to give the Brownfield Authority really broad financing authority that was independent of the Township Board, similar to like. It just seemed very broad, especially when you compare it to the Brownfield redevelopment statute, which is extremely specific and detailed, kind of similar to the Downtown Development Authority statute.
Sure, please, got a question. Um, in today's environment, it seems as though we got attorneys for everything. We got attorneys for, for human relations, we got attorneys for every subject. The attorney that went over this, is it a regular attorney or is somebody that specializes in Brownfield?
He specializes in brownfields.
Who is that, Ms. Corhorn?
Matt Zimmerman, Zimmerman from Varnum.
And, and you know that he specializes in brownfields?
Yes. Yep, that is a specialty. We also had Susan Wenzlink from Fishbeck review the bylaws as well. So she obviously isn't an attorney, but she, she deals with brown, brownfields as well, so. That's her specialty.
I had a concern, Article five, section five. It notes that the agenda will be created by the director, so that's the township staff. Yes. Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. It's not a creature of staff, I think that the section should be amended to expressly note that the board, the chairperson and members will collaborate, have the ability to collaborate on the agenda. I just, some of the language in here is could be potentially concerning, I think.
Sandra, the gentleman, I forgot his name, that worked with us in the very beginning, what was his name?
Roman, Roman Wilson.
Yeah, is he the one that joined us? Was he involved in this at all?
He was not involved in reviewing the bylaws, no, Susan Wenzlink, who also works for Fishback. Roman works for Fishback, he has background in brownfield, Susan does as well. In fact, she worked for the state of Michigan in their brownfield department for a number of years. So Roman kind of passed this off to Susan, if you will. So Susan is the one that has been guiding us and helping us.
Well, if we're not comfortable with the language and I had some concerns. Should we table it until we can get them addressed? I mean, we don't want to pass something that's going to be a problem for us later.
I want, I want to agree with Jim on that, I mean, we're, we're up to, we're getting involved with a binding committee with binding powers, and Jim, I agree with you.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this. Brownfield Authority. The bylaws, that we can review this with attorneys.
Clerks Slater, do you want to comment?
Yes, I had a question too, on the page, two of the bylaws into page three, there's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board and the Township Board. And I wasn't always sure which one was being discussed, as you said. So I want to make sure that's clear also.
I'd like to, I'd like to support Timmy's motion, but ask him if I can add that all board member comments be funneled to Ben and Ben take those regarding any issues they have, any board member has with the bylaws. So we get these consolidated comments and maybe not to Ben, maybe, I'm sorry, to Sandra. And then that Sandra take all of our comments forward. And then come back to us with the bylaws, is that okay, Timmy?
I just want to get all these things reviewed by an attorney. Because there's quite a bit in here where it shows that they're going to issue bonds.
Right.
I don't want, I don't want a committee issuing bonds.
Correct, I'm supporting your motion, but I just want to make sure that in the motion, we also say, if board members have any comments, send them to Sandra so we're ensured that they're consolidated and presented to the attorney or whoever looks at the bylaws.
That's fine.
And was, excuse me, was that trustee Nordhook or trustee Castle who made the motion?
No, Nordhook.
Okay. So a motion by trustee Nordhook to table the Brownfield or to table the, the resolution approving the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority bylaws. And specifically to, that the board would send all questions or concerns regarding the language or the terms of these bylaws to either manager Swayze or Ms. Corhorn. And further that these, that any comments, concerns by the board, as well as the bylaws themselves, be re-reviewed by legal counsel.
Correct.
Is there a second?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Sorry, seconded by trustee McDonald. All of, Slater, or Clerks Slater, could you please call the roll?
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Tricia Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes Supervisor Lefranc.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corhorn. Next, item thirty two, twenty twenty one. Oh, excuse me.
Oh, we have, we have Article nine, the new business yet, is that going to be under that consent or deputy?
We'll bring, how about we bring that up at the very last item so that our numbers are.
Okay, thank you.
More easily followed.
Thank you.
By me. Item thirty two, twenty twenty one. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty one poverty exemption policy and guidelines. Do we have Ms. Genter in the, at the meeting or is this manager Swayze?
I plan on handling this tonight, if that's all right with you.
Yes, please, continue.
All right, so this may look familiar, we actually approved the poverty exemption guidelines back at the end of two thousand and twenty. But in the beginning of two thousand and twenty one, the state made some significant changes to the application process. A lot of those changes are set forth in either the statutes or the directions from the treasurer's office. One of the things that was not set forward and that the board actually had, has a choice to do is whether that they would offer a twenty five percent, fifty percent or a hundred percent poverty exemption if you meet all of the qualifications. This is the first time that they have allowed townships to make that choice. We did review this with the Finance Personnel Committee and they recommended that the township do the hundred percent exemption because that's what we have done in the past. And talking to manager of assessment Genter, we really don't utilize this very much. They've only seen a couple of applications in the past five or six years and it sounded like maybe only one that was actually approved. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
I'm moving that we approve the poverty exemption policy and guidelines.
Support.
A motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Shipley to approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty one poverty exemption policy and guidelines as stated. Seconded by, oh, I'm sorry, seconded by trustee Shipley, all, or clerks Slater, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Castle.
Yes.
Tricia Pierce.
Yes.
Trustee McDonald.
Yes.
Trustee Shipley.
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook.
Yes.
Clerks Slater, yes Supervisor Lefranc.
Yes. Motion carried. Item thirty three, twenty twenty one. Consider inter-urban transit partnership services agreement. This is commonly known as the Rapid Bus Service. And the board is being asked tonight whether or not to extend Cascade service contract with the Rapid. Mr. Swayze?
Great, thank you, so as you mentioned, we contract with ITP for two specific line hall transportation services, as well as the paratransit services that come along with that to individuals with disabilities that live within three quarters of a mile of a line hall designator route. So the two line hall routes in the township are Twenty Eighth Street, that route goes east on Twenty Eighth Street, north on Patterson, east on Burton, south on Craft, east on Twenty Eighth, it turns around to the Thorn Apple Center, west on Twenty Eighth, past Patterson. And then we have the Thirty Sixth Route that goes west on Thirty Sixth Street, north on Craft Avenue, east on Thirty Third Street, south on Patterson and west on Thirty Sixth Street. Would note that that run only runs through peak periods and it has about fifteen trips daily where the Twenty Eighth Street Route runs on the same schedule as the rest of the Rapid Service. So in December of two thousand and twenty, the township received proposed contracts from the Rapid for the Twenty Eighth Street and Thirty Sixth Street Service. So their contract year typically begins in October, but the Rapid had agreed and the township had agreed to extend contracts for the previous rate for an additional three months, that was October, November, December, while they worked on adjusting rates based on state and federal funding levels that they expected to fluctuate due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So in December, we received contracts from the Rapid that contained a twelve point eight percent increase from sixty eight dollars and forty eight cents per service hour to seventy six dollars and seventy five cents per service hour. So at the time, we indicated to the Rapid that the increase wasn't going to be acceptable and we needed to come up with potential alternatives. Some of those alternatives that we recommended included possibly altering the physical route, altering the route frequency or altering the funding models before we would consider the new contracts. So after reviewing the potential alternatives, the Rapid agreed to a funding model that takes into account the revenue hours model for Cascade rather than the township bearing the full bus cost model that had been previously utilized. So under the full bus cost model, the township was responsible for paying the full amount of an additional bus that had to be added into Route twenty eight in order to serve Cascade. So under the new revenue hours model, which is the model that we have for the Thirty Sixth Street Route, the township will only pay for the time the bus is actually in Cascade Township, which means we effectively share part of the cost of the service with the Rapid proper. So in your packet, I included the calculations of what the service would cost. These contracts would run May fifteenth through September thirtieth with a new model versus the old model. So with the new model or the current arrangement, the contract cost through the rest of the Rapid's fiscal year would be just short of a hundred and fifty six thousand dollars. If we go to the revenue hours model, which is the proposed arrangement from the Rapid, it would go down to just south of ninety eight thousand dollars a year. So the resulting savings is fifty seven thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars. About thirty seven point two percent over what it had been utilizing the old model. Should be noted, because I mentioned that the Twenty Eighth Street Route is the only one where the model is changing. So the Thirty Sixth Street Route is already serviced under their revenue hours model and there won't be a change there. So if it's approved, it's anticipated the savings would be allocated to general fund portion of the payments. So I attached the Twenty Eighth Street and Thirty Sixth Street contracts for review. The language in the contracts is the same as the previous year except for the contract amount and the change in the cost share model. I also included in your packet both the fourth quarter ridership data reports for fiscal year two thousand and twenty and fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. So the contract race is based on the service hours now for the line hall service. The paratransit service is included as well, no matter the usage, they're required to use that. The paratransit service applies to any individual that qualifies for service and lives within three quarters of a mile of the line hall route. So the most recent comprehensive ridership reports have included in your report as well. So the Twenty Eighth Street Service in fourth quarter two thousand and twenty saw weekday daily ridership boardings and the lightings of approximately two hundred and seven riders per day. Saturday ridership of a hundred and forty five riders per day, Sunday ridership of seventy three riders. According to the Rapid personnel, those numbers compare favorably to other crosstown routes and the Twenty Eighth Street Route performs in the top twenty five percent of routes throughout the system. It should also be noted, the system saw a significant ridership drops in two thousand and twenty. If you reviewed the reports, you probably saw that specifically in second quarter of two thousand and twenty. But it appears now those ridership numbers have stabilized. So while the contract itself is for the remainder of the Rapid fiscal year, the contracts can be terminated at any time by either party with a three month notification. I also want to make sure that it's noted that if the contracts are not approved by the Township Board, the Rapid will begin the process of winding down the servicing Cascade and the bus will cease as of May fifteenth. So the Personnel Finance Committee did review the contracts at their March meeting. They voted two to one to recommend the Township Board approve the contracts. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I have a question, manager Swayze. That bus cost versus their new model, it's my understanding that that meant, since the inception, since the program began, we were being charged by the Rapid. How much it would cost for them to get a bus from the station downtown and bring it out to Cascade? Despite the reality is, all that's happening is that it's extending on Twenty Eighth Street, so it comes from Kentwood. Cascade Township begins at Patterson and it's just simply. Cascade Township begins at Patterson, and it's just simply an extension? So, one could say on one hand, it's a fifty-seven thousand dollar savings. On the other hand, for X number of years, Cascade's been paying an extra fifty-seven thousand dollars for an imaginary bus to be brought down when the reality is all it was was simply an extension? And, and why is that not taken into account on the other bus route? Why did they only cut that on the Twenty-Eighth Street one? When we pushed back, why not do that? Why are we still paying that same pretend cost on the, on the second route?
Yeah, so I guess I'll answer the second question first. Um, so the Thirty-Sixth Street Route was a artifact route of before the Rapid actually existed. Uh, and I can't remember the, the moniker of, of the bus service beforehand. Uh, but when that bus service started, uh, that was the, uh, the model that was charged to all townships, uh, that had routes that came into, into the system. Uh, when the, the Rapid started and they started adding new contracts, uh, they came up with this, this new model, so the, the Twenty-Eighth Street Route. Uh, and they were, they were upfront with us, they told us that if we wanted to have, uh, the bus serve, uh, Twenty-Eighth Street, that we would have to pay for the, the full bus worth of service. Uh, we began approaching them at the end of two thousand and eighteen, uh, about, uh, the fact that the, uh, the township thought that, uh, with the, the demonstration period over, that the route was successful. Uh, we also thought that it demonstrated that not only was it successful for Cascade Township, but it was a successful for people that were riding out of the Core Six Cities into, uh, the township to work or shop as well, and began the conversation with them about going to this revenue-sharing model. Unfortunately, we were stonewalled pretty hard by the, uh, the executive team at that point. Uh, that executive team is no longer there, uh, so working with the, the new team that's in place right now, uh, they were more apt to look at this service model.
After we, you and I had the meeting and we told them we're out, then all of a sudden they came back and dropped the extra fifty-seven thousand dollars.
Comment?
Oh, sorry, trustee Shipley?
Thank you. Being a a investigator, but not professional, I followed our bus three times, once in the morning, once in the afternoon, and once evening, evening. Granted, that was only three shifts, but I saw nobody get off that bus or get on the bus any three shifts except at Midas. Today additionally, about four fifteen, the bus turns around abruptly on Twenty-Eighth Street, does not even complete the route down into the village. So if we had somebody by some s- small chance waiting down at Wal- Walgreens, it would not have been picked up. I think that they are raping the township and the citizens of this township for profit. I am not in favor of continuing this contract.
I think we are subsidizing a county-wide program at the expense of our residents. And the number, what I have, what I was told from staff and also the, the transit system is that the benefit, the, the ridership shows that it's residents who don't live in Cascade Township coming to local businesses, but those local businesses are, is Meyer and Walmart. Meyer and Walmart. And those numbers that were provided to us by the Rapid include a section of Kentwood. And I think as the board, we're entrusted, we are the directly responsible for representing Cascade Township's interests. Although there may be a benefit, there certainly is a benefit. If our job is to be fiscally responsible with residents' money, what I've heard from residents as well as local businesses excluding Meyer and Walmart is the support is not there to justify the cost. The benefit is, is, the, the cost is far outweighs the benefit to residents. I definitely see there's a benefit, but I don't think it's a, a strong enough benefit without further discussion with residents and also local businesses. Trustee Shipley?
One other comment, it's not about the Rapid, but we have had excellent service from the Hope Network on that bus, and I know the township picks up some of the tab on that. And we've had nothing but good reviews from the residents about that service.
And your proposal here is, and, and we discussed this too, that seventy-five percent of this cost will now be shifted to the DDA and only twenty-five percent picked up by the general fund, is that correct?
That would be my proposal, um, that would need to be vetted out by the DDA, uh, but I think that the, uh, the data shows that the, the benefit is in, uh, the DDA district, the businesses that are in the DDA district. Uh, the, um, you know, when we started having this conversation with the, uh, the Rapid back in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, we did do a, uh, they, they did do a one-day survey to kind of, um, survey who was riding the bus. And that particular day, particular day, it was all people from the Core Six Cities coming out to Cascade businesses to either work or shop.
And what, how, what, what has the response been from residents locally? Feedback and also local businesses besides Meyer and Walmart and D and W?
So I think it's a, I think it's a mixed bag. I think there are certainly people out there that, um, uh, think the bus service is good for, for their business. Uh, there's people out there that think the bus service is bad for their business. You know, I, I don't think if you're looking for a, a definitive, you know, what does the community feel about it, I would say, in, in my experience and in the, uh, in the surveys that we've done, it's been, it's been about a fifty-fifty, uh, mixed bag.
Did any of, I just, I haven't seen any of the data, what businesses were contacted, what those opinions were, and also with residents?
Well, when we first launched this, Ben, I remember we had Meyer come to us, we had Bob Evans, we had the YMCA, we had the Cascade Roadhouse, and there was another company, which I don't think it exists anymore, it was the, um, telemarketing facility up on the horizon.
Yep.
They came and they were all strong advocates for it. And I think Sandra had, had polled some of the other, um, businesses as well. And, you know, they, and this wasn't really a bus for residents, this was a bus really to help our employers, our businesses, to get employees out. So, you know, I always thought that it, that it was very important for economic development. And the Rapid came in, or not the Rapid, I'm sorry, but the Right Place came and presented to us, and the Right Place is the leading economic development entity in West Michigan. And they made a very strong case that said, you need infrastructure, which includes public transportation for businesses, which is why the Thirty-Sixth Street Line is there. And that would be, um, also helpful for, for Twenty-Eighth Street businesses. So I don't think it's a big, um, I don't, I, I think since the DDA was paying for at least half of it, and we've all thought that the DDA should pay for seventy-five percent of it, that's not residents' money, that's businesses' money. So, uh, if we move forward with this and have the, the DDA pay for seventy-five percent of it, the residents pay for very, very little, um, uh, because that money is pooled from lots of different sources. So, I, 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 I think I totally agree with Grace that there's probably a lot of residents who don't like it. I've had a lot of residents say they do like it, they think it's a smart thing. Uh, I, so I think it's a really emotional one way or the other, but overall, I think it's good for economic development, especially as we grow, uh, and we're, we're growing township, especially as younger people today are not driving cars. And employers are looking desperately for employees, and those employees need public transportation. So I think what's good for the businesses, including Myers, they're big, including BMW, they're big, including Walmart, and YMCA and others. Um, it, while it's a tough decision, I think it's a smart decision overall, because what's good for businesses is good for Cascade, what's good for Cascade is good for the residents, even though the, the benefits are, you know, tangential, but I still think they're, they're there.
I think that it, that's a great generic argument that, and the Right Place is a county-wide program. And the, the Rapid is a county-wide program selling a service, which is very expensive and that we've been subsidizing for years. But the reality is, the numbers don't justify the extreme costs. And residents and local businesses, the numbers and the, have not been, have not been asked appropriately. And our job is to represent the township's best interest, not tell people what we should do for business growth. I, I just don't.
Are we calling the Rapid a liar then about their numbers?
I am, yes, sir.
I mean, that's, I mean, I mean, that's really what we're saying, and I think we need to validate that.
Well, then.
I'll take a, a CPA with me and do checkmarks at every stop, or in my case, no checkmark.
I think that's a good idea, John. I think it's a good idea.
Trustee Nordhook?
I have a question. Tom, how long, how long has this, uh, Twenty-Eighth Street bus been running for us?
Since what, Ben, two, two, or Sanders, two thousand and eighteen?
Two thousand and sixteen.
Sixteen, okay. So we did a three-year pilot.
Okay, I, um, I always see an empty bus, and I hear other people say they see an empty bus. Every time I'm up and down Twenty-Eighth Street, I see the bus, I make a very clear point to check and see how many people are on it. Occasionally, I do see one person. Most of the time, it's an empty bus.
Question of you, sir. Uh, when this first started, did not Myers and Walmart, I don't know who all, kick in some money to, uh, provide the service out here or volunteer to donate money to it?
Uh, we did get a couple of years, Myers contributed sixty-six hundred dollars a year.
Go back and ask Mars, if they want to keep their riders coming, they can kick into it. I do not agree that the township president should pay for this. And Tom, with all due respect, because I know you know numbers, I disagree. DDA money is taxpayer money coming from somewhere. And DDA residents, Grace, wait a minute, I got four. DDA, the business people are residents of this township. And to say that we're not using their money, that's wrong. We are. It's our decision to be economical and use those dollars to the best of this board's ability. Now I'm done, Grace, you can have a floor.
I just, I just wanted to finish that. That if we've got four years at over four hundred thousand a year, that's a one-point-six-million-dollar experiment. I'm just saying that right now, it's not panning out. That's not saying that we can't go back in four or five years and revisit the, the subject. But right now, it's just not economical. I'd rather put that money toward a park that our residents would use. That's my, that's my side. Although I will add, if this is gonna pass, it runs up and down the whole DDA. That's all it does, so hundred percent on the DDA if you're gonna keep going with it. I suggest we quit. I like the Thirty-Sixth Street bus, that's a good bus. Sandra, what do you hear from the, uh, uh, DDA, uh, uh, group as far as the public transportation is concerned? What kind of feedback do you get?
Yeah, the DDA is, uh, in favor of the, uh, public transportation. Uh, it does bring the workers out to the businesses in the community, um, which they're very much in favor of. It provides that, um, you know, vitality for the businesses, economic vitality for the district. There were many businesses before that struggled to get employees before the bus was out here, so the DDA is in favor of it.
Ms. Jay, whatever, Ms. Corhorn, Ms. Corhorn, what I heard from you was that it was Meyer, the manager at Meyer. I, I have not been on the DDA that long, but I think it's premature. When we've got local, local businesses who are struggling during COVID, would do anything for desperately needing it, the numbers are down on the bus. I have not heard, and I don't think frankly, we've asked recently the local businesses, I haven't seen it.
It's been a couple of years, it's certainly more than Meyer, that benefits from, uh, the bus service.
That's a little different than when we spoke previously. I think it's worth asking all those local businesses that are trying to stay alive during COVID, if we want four hundred thousand roughly per year to go towards this bus that's been shown to service outside residents and a couple, and primarily to large, big-box stores. Trust, uh, treasure Pierce?
Could I suggest maybe, basing the motion on, uh, DDA assuming a hundred percent of the cost? Want to put their money where their mouth is?
Still taxpayer money, but I'm more in favor of that than our residents. Still an empty bus. Well, well.
Make a motion.
Get, to get this, the motion going or discussion going, I'll make a motion that be approved, uh, new Rapid Agreement, uh, subject to the DDA funding a hundred percent of the cost.
Second.
I would, one comment before we take the vote. The longer we continue this mundane, traditional model of a huge, empty bus through Cascade every thirty minutes, the less likely we are to come up with actual constructive and cost-effective solutions. And it's the same time, people want parks, they want to preserve green space, they want a pedestrian bridge over the Thorn Apple River on Cascade Drive or Cascade Road. I think our, we have to start making priorities and putting residents first. I don't think this is a high priority.
The, the businesses, though, uh, Grace, are part of the township, and we owe it to them too, to provide transportation. And it isn't a bus that's taking residents downtown out of Cascade, but it's bringing residents in to, to, uh, frequent our businesses and provide employees that they need.
I think for a fraction of the cost, we could have a minivan or an Uber service.
Well, there's a motion and support. Can we vote on it?
It's a motion by
Me?
Trustee Castle to extend, for how long, trustee Castle?
Well, this is the, it goes through, I think, uh, what, Ben, uh, December?
September thirtieth.
September thirtieth.
To extend the inter-urban transit system contract through September thirtieth with the, with the change that the downtown develop, pending the downtown developments approval of accepting one hundred percent of those costs.
Right.
Seconded by trustee Pierce, treasure Pierce. Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Nordhook?
No.
Trustee Shipley?
Absolutely no.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Castle?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Lessbrunt?
No. Motion carried. The next two items on the agenda, thirty, item thirty-three, twenty-twenty-one, and thirty-four, twenty-twenty-one. It was brought to my attention yesterday that there is a procedural error on the special assessment district, um, the process that makes the, at this point, the, the actual special assessment district, defective, that needs to be corrected before this board can take further action. Special counsel has made the recommendation that both of these be tabled so that the situation can be remedied legally as required by statute. And given that, um, given that situation, I think it, I would recommend that it is premature to appoint citizen committees at this point, that we resolve the, um, the defect or look into that first. So I would say a motion to table both of these agenda items, and I would make that motion.
What is a defect, do you know?
I do. The statute is very clear and very specific about the process. The role, the citizens, the, the role was never certified as, by the supervisor, so in that case, this would be myself. Although it was stated in the paperwork prepared, or provided to our, to this board at the February twenty, or excuse me, the February twenty and twen- tenth meeting, excuse me. It was represented to this board that that certification had, had occurred. It had not, it's a precondition to then this resolution being, the resolution being passed by the board. Given the fact that that certification didn't happen as it's required by statute, before we, we can unilaterally impose taxes on residents, you can't have a defective, um, neither one of those special assessment districts are, are, are proper at this point. That's not to say the entire process starts over, but we need to consult with legal counsel so that we have it, we have, it's done correctly.
So, d- does this go back to Cliff then?
Yes.
Okay.
He was not aware of this situation, he, he, this is. Yes.
Okay.
And legally, we really, legally, we do not have a choice. If we want to follow the law. Clerk Slater?
A question, um, there was the email from
Cascade River Association.
Yes, thank you, about, and I don't know. Yes, thank you. About, and I don't know if that, I don't think that is involved in this, but it had something to do with terminology in terms of the direction of the river. Is that also part of that?
It is not.
What they're calling upstream, downstream?
It is separate, and unfortunately, I just did not have time to talk to any members of the association before. Um, but that issue is kind of premature and irrelevant at this point until this defect is, is addressed.
Sure.
Good question.
And this would give, give us time to look at that as well.
Right.
Right.
Was there a second?
There was, by Timmy.
It's a motion by Supervisor Lesbrants to table both items 33, 2021, and 34, 2021, supported by Trustee Nordhook. Clerk Slater, could you please call the roll?
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? Yes. Supervisor Lesbrants?
Yes. Motion carried. Last item of new business tonight, item 35, 2021, deputy position realignment. Please note that although this is, this is a, this is properly put in the public or in the open discussion because it is a structural process issue to protect employees or specific staff members, the board is not allowed to publicly discuss, uh, personnel issues related to specific individuals. That would need to be done in a closed session. So with those guidelines, Manager Swayze?
Yep, thank you. So I am recommending a restructuring of the deputy clerk and deputy treasurer positions. Um, the proposed restructuring will ensure that all employees of the township can be held to the policies and procedures of the township and that all the work can be completed in an efficient and effective manner. The new possible job descriptions are attached. Uh, they would give the township manager oversight of these uh, staff positions with the exception of the duties assigned to the deputy clerk and the deputy treasurer positions. Uh, so in term of the treasures department, there actually is already two positions established for employee, uh, for the employee that retains the title of deputy treasurer. Uh, so that arrangement was completed to ensure that both the township manager and the treasurer had oversight of the position. Uh, the treasurer is responsible for oversight overseeing the statutory duties of the deputy treasurer uh, job description, while the township manager is responsible for overseeing the responsibilities as laid out in what's currently referred to as the account clerk two position. So I'm promoting, proposing that remain the same, but I would propose that the account clerk two position be retitled to the treasury services administrator to better reflect the rule of the position. So currently, the deputy clerk position does not have a secondary position title. Excuse me. Up until 2020, the position was held as a deputy clerk slash HR director position. Uh, and then in 2020, we split that position, uh, due to the time needed to dedicate to each function. So the deputy clerk position was retained while a new position, the HR generals was created. So I'm proposing once again that the deputy clerk position be tied, be separated into two titles. The deputy clerk position will retain the statutory duties of the position, will be overseen by the clerk. The secondary position will be titled public services administrator and will retain the non-statutory duties of the position, uh, including the responsibilities for cemeteries and passports. So funding for the positions will be vested in the non-deputy job descriptions. Uh, the clerk and treasurer retain their statutory right to, uh, appoint their respective duties. Uh, and the anticipation is that the township manager and treasurer and the township manager and clerk uh, will work cooperatively in order to select a candidate, uh, uh, to best fit the position. So I'm requesting the board to approve the uh, restructuring of the deputy positions and the creation of the treasury, of the public services administrator and the retitering of the treasury services administrator positions.
Any discussion? Trustee Shipley?
Well, since Manager Swayze kind of touched on this, I don't know what bearing this has, uh, been, but I've had four residents call me concerned about the clerk's office and the community development office. They are concerned about theft of public funds, falsifying records and documents, abuse of positions, concern of cemetery records that may or may not even exist anymore, padding of payroll, abuse of township residents. Will this realignment solve those problems? I understand prosecutor's office has already assigned an investigator.
Uh, I'm not aware of an investigator being assigned for those issues, but I do believe that uh, with this realignment, Clerk Slater and I will be able to work together, uh, to resolve the service issues that we've had in the clerk's department.
I might suggest that if they are not resolved properly, that the residents will be calling for resignations and interminations. That's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee Shipley.
And we owe it to the residents to find out what the hell is in the bottom of this swamp.
Here, here.
I move to approve the restructuring of, uh, uh, deputy positions as brought, as described by, uh, Manager Swayze.
Support.
Motion by Trustee McDonald to approve the resolution.
The restructuring of the deputy.
Sorry. To, to approve the, the realignment of the deputy positions as stated by Manager Swayze. Uh, seconded by, was that Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Clerk Slater, please call the roll.
Trustee Kessel?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Treasure Pierce?
Yes.
Trustee Nordhook?
Yes.
Trustee Shipley?
Yes.
Clerk Slater? No. Supervisor Lesbrants?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, Manager Swayze. Thank you, Manager Swayze. Next on the agenda, Article 11, Public Comments, Assistant Manager Fast. Do we have any members in the audience who would like to speak?
Uh, thank you Supervisor Lesbrants. For anyone who has joined up with the last announcement, uh, please raise your hand if you would like to address the board. Uh, please state your name and address clearly. And if there's anyone joining us via telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Okay. We have one raised hand at this time Supervisor Lesbrants. And I am patching through Keely Shay.
Welcome, Ms. Shay. Please proceed.
Hi there. Thank you so much. Um, first of all, I really would like to just say thank you so much to Supervisor Lesbrants. Thank you for your courage and your honesty and your trust in God that must be the sustaining force that inspired you to say yes and step into this situation in Cascade. You have so many residents and community members who are so thankful and inspired by your willingness to enter into the ring. You are a gift and more and more of us are inspired to become informed, pay attention, and help return our community to goodness. Having attended most board meetings since October 28th, 2020, and having sought help and answers for our Cascade neighborhood from the township board and the township manager since July of 2020, I've witnessed obstacles and dissonance that I was honestly surprised to see in my own community. One where I admittedly had not been paying attention at all. When I did start paying attention, given the level of chaos and corruption in our world, I sought to follow the legal system and the system supposedly put in place to protect our inalienable rights such as trusting that the Open Meetings Act would be adhered to and that legally submitted FOIA requests would be responded to in an honest and timely manner. After our residents on October 28th, 2020, the old board were denied the request to attend the Personnel Finance Committee meeting with Manager Swayze stating it was a closed meeting where they were discussing the dispersment of the federal cares funds. I submitted a FOIA request on January 7th of 2021, following the strike down by the old board of our neighborhood's legally approved request for federal cares funds to bring broadband internet to our neighborhood for our schoolchildren who are being required to attend school online as a result of the government-induced shutdowns. In this FOIA request, I requested specifically regarding the cares funds that Manager Swayze recommended and the board voted to approve on November 17th, 2020. Please forward all discussion in correspondence with the township attorney regarding the legality and validity of as well as an itemized list of expenses, dated receipts, and to whom specifically these funds were dispersed. $25,000 for remote work expenses, $40,000 for COVID-19 equipment and supplies for items such as sanitizing supplies, fiberglass partitions, $15,000 for teleconferencing service for Wisner Center, $10,000 for election worker hazard pay, and $127,000, the balance of the $217,000 federally subsidized cares funds. On January 29th, 16 business days after the initial request, Manager Swayze responded that this material is being compiled as part of our CARES Act reporting requirements and will be supplied to you once it is prepared. We are now at 54 business days since this request and still no answer. So I've been meeting with our neighbors from Alaska Ridge to seek to find solutions to the problems that we as residents are seeing and have experience with the Cascade Township Board. We are asking, we have a proposal actually, that at each board meeting, there be a specific time for resident questions to which a township representative replies with a qualified answer citing sources and resources and to which residents are also able to reply with a qualified answer citing sources and resources, thus tapping into the brilliant residents that we have in our own community. In short, we do not want board members or staff members who simply think they know the answers to all the questions giving unqualified opinions and not real answers such as a computer technician claiming to know a lot about placing chemical and biological agents in our river. We ask that all questions and answers be documented and placed in the record in order to increase interest in transparency of and have real accountability for Cascade Township's governance. And if those questions are not able to be answered at the said meeting, we ask that they be followed up and answered with sources and resources cited at the following board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. I want to ensure residents that township compliance with the Open Meetings Act, which your comments touched on, is a priority. And I think it's prudent at some point that this board, um, do a comprehensive review of our open meetings to make sure that all of our aspects of the township government are in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. That includes the board, our committees, department heads, record keeping, postings, our notices, um, and also our accessibility to, to, uh, to documents. I think it's prudent every now and then, uh, your comments touched on that, and I think it would go a long ways to enhance public trust. So we will work on that from our end, and thank you for your comments.
Supervisor Lesbrants, we do, we did receive one written comment, um, during the board meeting. Can I read that now into the record?
Please.
Uh, Kristen Carlson commented that as a business taxpayer, um, we are not in favor of the bus service being paid for by the DDA. And now we have another resident, uh, Craig Merlin.
Good evening, Mr. Merlin. Please proceed.
Okay, um, I would like to just make a couple of comments. One, in my past experience, having the ability of getting bus service for people to come and work in a community is important, even if for extended periods of time, it may not look like it is a tangible benefit to the community. Um, so I also think that we should always be sensitive to the needs of people less fortunate than those of us sitting around these cameras right now in terms of the ability to access transportation. Um, and I think it's a sign of a vibrant community that it does allow mobility for those less fortunate. I had heard years ago that in fact, there were people who were working as nannies and other uh, home workers also took the bus in a prior meeting. That's enough on the bus. On Ms. Shay's comment about her FOIA request for the CARES Act, I was very disappointed in the board when it turned down, in essence, the Alaska Ridge people. I do understand now why they turned it down because I've looking at the performance dashboard that the, I think the township supplies the data to the state of Michigan as part of its township, city and village revenue sharing. And the performance dashboard says in our economic strength, first question, percent of community with access to high-speed broadband. We're at 100%. So the Alaska Ridge people either are not in our township or in fact do have high-speed internet and they're just not telling us that. I say that a bit facetiously, obviously. Um, but there again, the, why couldn't we supply hotspots that could be placed in various locations around that neighborhood so that we can ensure that our citizens do in fact have the services that we represent to the state of Michigan to have. Um, and with that, I'll be quiet.
Uh, board, please note, I muted everyone due to that, uh, disturbance, audio disturbance. So people will need to unmute their microphones to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Merlin. We have any other comments, Assistant Manager Fast?
There are no further comments at this time Supervisor Lesbrants.
Thank you. Moving on to Article 12, Manager Comments. Manager Swayze, do you have any comments tonight?
I do not have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Article 13, Board Member Comments. Do we have any board members wishing to comment? Treasure Pierce?
I've got a small hand. I made a suggestion at the last meeting about doing an after project review, and it seemed to be favorably received. I failed to mention that I actually got that idea from Mr. Merlin, and I give him credit for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasure Pierce.
Yeah, there we go.
Trustee Shipley?
I have a comment, of course. First of all, Mr. Merlin and, and Keely, thanks for being here again as you normally are. I really appreciate it. I just want to remind all of us that the township offices are hired by us, the board. We, the board, are hired by the residents of this township. If we don't clean up our own act, drain the fricking swamp, somebody will do it for us. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Trustee Shipley.
John, I think that's pretty, um, uh, aggressive. I, I certainly think we've done a good job the last.
I don't care if you think it's aggressive. I don't think we've done a good job. We are not doing the oversight that we should be doing.
John, you voted almost unanimously with everybody for four years and things can be taken out of context. I think I, 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 I appreciate the comments. I appreciate the criticisms. I think we can always do better.
Well, we need to get off our duffs and do it, Tom.
I don't think we're sitting on our duffs. I think people are doing their job. And I, I just think, I think it's good to be self-critical. I think it's good to be self-analytical. But, uh, but I don't, but I'm not going to grandstand and say we've done great and not going to grandstand and say, oh my goodness, we're, we're so terrible. I, I think we've done a very credible job. And I think we all try hard. Do we always do the right thing? We, we hope to and we try to, and we're looking out for our, our residents' interest and our business interest. So I, I, you know, I, I hear it all. I agree, being self-analytical is good, but I don't think it's, it's as bad as you're trying to portray.
Well, we'll see what the prob, what the prosecutor's office finds out, won't they?
Well, let's bring it on. I, I think we should. If we need one, then let's bring it on. I don't know anything about that, but if there is one, then.
Well, there's a lot of things that we on the board don't know about.
Okay.
Leave it at that, Tom.
Okay, well, I.
The rest might be better off in a closed session.
Right. Until I learn about those things, um, which I don't know about, then, you know, I'll wait to, for, for judgment. That's all my, my only comment.
I want to comment as supervisor that I thank the residents for their oversight. And their participation, even if it's uncomfortable, it's necessary and it's helpful. And I want to urge. Encourage, just to reiterate the importance that, that we operate this township with transparency. And that we are accountable to the public. And I think the more oversight and the more we can honestly look at our processes within staff. The better we will serve our residents.
Grace, I would like to say one more thing. I would like to thank Mr. Merlin again for bringing up. Those who are less fortunate. Mobility issues, inclusive, inclusivity issues. And I think it is something that's easy for us to over oversee and not look into. So I'm glad he, he brought that to our attention as well.
Thank you. Mr. Merlin's comments and participation have been extremely helpful. Even if at times a little bit awkward, we'll take it. Thank you. Any other comments or? Hearing none?
I'd like to, I'd like to acknowledge Ken. Wanted a more detailed explanation of. All the costs involved in Township Hall. And I want to thank Jim Holman for submitting a very detailed. Explanation of that to all of us. And I think that was very helpful. And it cleared up some of the issues. So thank you to Jim. Thank you to Ken for suggesting it.
Thank you. And trustee Nordhook, I think you're suggesting that we make a field trip down to the Portage Fire Station. From seeing it personally. Residents and a lot of people won't see it, but it was so eye opening and so helpful as far as. Being efficient and overseeing and fiscally responsible. I can't thank you enough. But that was the. That was the most valuable two hours I think this township. Has had in quite some time, especially as we approach our largest capital improvement project of. To date. Thank you. Article 14, adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Support.
The motion by trustee Nordhook, supported by trustee McDonald to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.